I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board statements. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place, thereof in the record New Milford Public Library, New Milford Borough Hall, and the main office of all New Milford Public Schools. The Board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public, the first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the State of New Jersey, members of the public are asked not to speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. Recommended action: I seek a motion to approve minutes for December 5th work, December 10th regular and December 5th closed. Angela Lombardi seconded by Toni Albro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Superintendent Schools Report, Danielle Shanley?
Hi. Thank you all for waiting. I really appreciate it. We had a lot of business to cover tonight. Tonight on the agenda, we have a few resignations, some of which are... One of them is Terri Fisher. She is the administrative assistant to superintendent, not just me, but Michael too. She was also served as my administrative assistant when I was Director of Curriculum. And she has been a wonderful force, historical memory organizer of all things that happened on our side with Central Office. And she will be resigning effective this summer, not resigning, retiring effective this summer. And Dr. Asa will also be retiring at the end of this year. Dr. Asa is just a consummate gentleman and wonderful chemistry professor. Had a one conversation one time that I will never forget about, no, we are always, and I think fed it off in this meeting, he said, "We are always in a state of warning." I don't remember how the conversation came up, but I think fed that off when we were sitting in this library, like, are we always in a state of warning or are we... But they, wonderful time commitment and dedication that they have given to the District of New Milford, and they will be missed. And also tonight on the agenda, with a mix of emotions, is my resignation from position of superintendent. Regrettably, and please just bear with me while I read because I won't find the words if I don't read them. Regrettably, due to my growing family needs, I find it necessary to accept a position closer to home. This decision was not made lightly, and it's my hope that the Board will understand the importance of my being available for the growing needs of my family, particularly my mother and my daughter at this time. It has been an amazing journey, serving the community as your Director of Curriculum, your Assistant Superintendent, and eventually my return to Superintendent of Schools. I have often and proudly referred to New Milford as a little gem, the little green gem of Burton County, that a lot of people may not even know is here because it's so tiny, but a progressive district that was always welcoming change, welcoming creative initiatives, welcoming changes to research-based programming, a district that values student ideas and their desires, and one that respects the work of its teachers and its leadership. Some of the highlights of my time here have included comprehensive improvements to academic programming in all content areas and in all grade levels. The develop of the academies at New Milford High School in Arts and Letters, Global Leadership, and STEM with almost 170 students in it this year. Expansion of less AP programming, options for dual credit, independent studies, work-study, Option 2 programming. We added Team PEPP, Health Electives, Maker Spaces, Creative Scheduling Model, advancing Unified Lunch for all of our students and staff, and the FLEX, now known as Fresh Start Period, and a variety of extracurricular and co-curricular activities, including expansion of the arts. Our high school graduates continue to see acceptances at some of the most competitive colleges and universities in the nation, including Ivy League schools and our nation's military academies. In the middle school, we adopted research-based academic programming in all content areas. PBIS Inquiry Science, DBQs and Social Studies, Connected Math, Teachers College Columbia Reading and Writing Workshop, and launched the development of the Junior Academies with a variety of selectives in art, music, STEM, robotics, business, finance, and expansion of world languages, including Mandarin. At the elementary level, we embarked on a similar overhaul in all content areas, including research-based ELA programming, Project Refonics Instruction, Teachers College, very well supported with expansive classroom libraries, and we've implemented extensive benchmarking and data collection throughout the district. Under my leadership here, we have revised Gifted and Talented to include more students at a reduced cost. We've expanded ELL services to meet the growing needs of our student population, more than 45 home languages spoken in the community of New Milford. We've brought in Title I resources to include now school-wide services in three of our buildings, and we've seen the development of a comprehensive teacher-leader cadre that has helped our faculty and staff hopefully to see themselves as valued leaders in our school community. We've embarked on years and years of high-quality professional development for all of our professionals. I remember when I first came here, I think the budget for the curriculum office was something like $40,000. And now to support all of these programs, we spend well over $1 million a year supporting academic programming, professional development, and supporting our students in their passion-led endeavors. And there has been so much more that has transpired in my time here, all of which was selected, supported, implemented, because it was in the best interest of our students and because our teachers had the capacity to execute. And I cannot underemphasize the work of the teachers in this district. I have seen amazing educators here in this tiny little gem of the town, really dedicated, passionate, loving, caring people who dedicate their lives to other people's kids. Fiscally, the district continues to make responsible decisions that allow us to maintain a certain educational lifestyle for our students. Even when reductions need to be made, I'm always cognizant of not affecting the students. Last year's budget was difficult, as this year's budget will be, but our focus is always on preserving the quality of educational experiences for the children of New Milford. Our student achievement is always growing. Yes, everybody was impacted by COVID, but we were not alone in that impact. Our state CUSAC monitoring process has always been successful and well-recognized by our county office educational specialists, with New Milford being a place where new administrators should look for excellence in programming that can happen in a fiscally responsible manner. Most of you here on the Board were not here in 2010 when I arrived, and we're not part of these amazing changes over the years. But the children, your children, many of you, are the beneficiaries of the purposeful and meaningful changes, and I have full confidence in the continued success and growth of the New Milford Public School District and will carry fond memories of these accomplishments. I have given my all to the students of this community, and because of that, my life has been enriched many times over. I have been blessed by the relationships I have developed here and the many interactions with the talented educators, dedicated staff, exceptional students, Board trustees, family members, mayors, police chiefs, and community members that I have known during my 11 years in New Milford. We have celebrated and we have mourned together. We have challenged each other and grown stronger as a result. But when it comes to the students, we always remain united. I've had the pleasure of working with intelligent Board trustees, an amazingly talented leadership team, technology team, custodial team, buildings and grounds team, paraprofessionals, lunch aides, bus aides, bus drivers, you name it. But not to mention dedication, intellect, creativity, and passion of mine. Left and right hand, Lauren and Stephanie would be a travesty. They are always focused on the servants of the students, and whatever we achieve, we achieve together. And whenever we're in trouble, we're in trouble together. So for all of those experiences and for all of these people, I am deeply grateful, and because of them, I have been changed for good. So again, I thank you for this amazing journey. New Milford would always hold a very special place in my heart, and it's been my distinct privilege to be in mine. All right, I just want to remind you of some fun events coming up.
Maybe before I do that, I just want to say, you know, thank you in the sense for your service and your commitment. I think everyone who's worked with you, either as the Assistant Curriculum Assistant Superintendent and as your unwieldy commitment to the district and student achievement and putting the kids first. So thank you and good luck on your future endeavor.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night is the National Honor Society Induction here at the high school. On Monday, we will be doing Coffee with the Superintendent, and Dr. Chris Amalis and Patty... Oh my God, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're very loud.
Yeah, I'm just gonna...
Do you want us to come back to you?
No, and Patty Pelacaccio will be joining me to talk about the science explorers at Berkeley Street School. On Tuesday, David Yellins is holding their PTO meeting. On Wednesday, the rescheduled Berkeley School Winter Concert is being held at the high school auditorium that will also be streamed. And for those of you who wanted to see Gibbs' concert, which was also held in the auditorium tonight, I did put it's on Facebook page and it's on the district website, so you can watch it if you missed it. The Young Expressions Regional High School Art Show is next Thursday, January 25th, and it is at the Art Center for Northern New Jersey on Center Street, right here in New Milford. It should be a really special night. I hope you can attend and see the wonderful work of our talented young artists. On Tuesday, January 30th, Junior Family Post-Secondary Planning Night. So that's the high school guidance office is doing a post-secondary planning night for junior families. Thursday, February 1st is the Berkeley Tricky Try at the Tides Estate in North Heldon. It should be a really great time. And it is also apparently 8th Grade Family Night in the auditorium. And on Saturday, February 3rd is the wrestling event, the Winter Slam Wrestling Event on Saturday, February 3rd in the big gym. And so I really hope that you all come out and bring the little kids. They have a great time with wrestling. There will be pizza, popcorn, and a wonderful time will be had on the ball. And I also wanted to follow up and let you know that there will be a letter going out to ask parents and community members who would like to be part of the profile of a New Milford graduate because we're still moving forward with that. And Dr. Murphy will be returning to follow up and take us through that process, and that should be going up at the end of the week. And that's it, my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, which is that when it's time for you officially leave, I'll have something to say. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Construction Report, Lauren Goxte.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I kept it light. I anticipated a longer evening tonight. I just wanted to draw your attention to two items on the agenda for the regular meeting, C-23, 24, 25. I just wanted to extend my gratitude to Michelle Williams and the leaders of the academies for planning another upcoming trip for academy students to visit various colleges and universities. I'll be able to share more about that trip at our next meeting. And also, the next item, we are approving new courses. The scheduling process will begin in the coming weeks. The program of studies is finalized. We're looking at offering to students a web design course for 10th through 12th graders, environmental science option for 9th graders, and contemporary math for our 12th graders. So more information will be shared later in the spring when we have our student selections and we know what will actually be done. But we would like to offer these to students. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Business Administrator Report, Stephanie Pichar.
Good evening. First, I want to start by congratulating Nicole Dunn for becoming a certified Board member. Then I would like to move on to the flooded field. The first flood had happened in early December. We had someone come out to evaluate the field. Unfortunately, at the time, the water had not receded far enough, so they were unable to sort of see the significant damage that was or lack thereof, to see what damage was done to the field. And fortunately, they didn't evaluate it because then it flooded again, and then it flooded again. So they should be coming out sometime next week, so I'll have more information about the condition of the fields at that time. However, after the first flood, we did have some damage to the far side field fence. We did get a quote for that, and it's under our deductible, so we would not be putting that claim through insurance. But I did notify the carrier, and so it was for reporting purposes only. Should we sustain other damages, we do have that claim. I did then put in the second and third claim. So the carrier has been notified because we do carry flood insurance. So that's all I have for that one. On the agenda is BA 23-24.56. Mr. Lombardi, the only trustee who would express interest in being part of the Borough Flood Committee, so I will let the Borough know. But I did include that on the list of liaisons. I think it's under the liaisons on the committee list so that you all have that. And then we are in the budgeting process. We will be setting up a Finance and Facilities Committee meeting later at the end of this month. When we started the budget process, we had sort of a significantly unbalanced budget above $10 million. For the past few years, we've built a budget based on zero-based budgeting, and we've sort of given the administrators the ability to plan on what they need, but starting with zero, not looking at the previous year. This year, in collaboration with Mrs. Shanley, we've had further reduce their budgets, and so we looked at what their spending was for the past few years and then what's currently left in their budget as of the date that we sent the memo. And we reduced them based on a percentage and then looked based on what they had spent to date. So with that, I received two back, one that was within the budget number, the other one that could not be within the budget number, but had justification on why that couldn't happen. So at this point, we're very close to have a balanced budget. However, there's still a lot of work to be done, and this is assuming that we have... We stayed flat in our state funding, which we all know that didn't happen last year. I did reach out to the Executive County Business Official to remind him that we did get cut in state aid, and I'd really like that not to happen. He was like, "There's nothing I can do preemptively, but thanks for letting me know." And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Angela?
The equipment that's still out upon the field, is that included with the track field equipment? The pads that are still kind of floating?
The pads were removed? They were removed? Or was there damage to them from the first flood? No. That's why they remain out there because they're made with material that sort of doesn't rip and they can dry out. We also don't have a means to really move them, and sometimes we could do more damage by moving them than water could by just getting wet. If we're expecting large, and they weigh so much that they're not really going to move. The picnic tables did get floated downstream or the river. We were able to get all of them back. But we did move them for the most recent flooding, the big track mats. That's sort of a... Are we doing more harm in chancing ripping them by moving them and putting them on big equipment because they are so heavy than we are of just leaving them there and then getting wet? Because it was so cold, they did ice, but they dried out, so there's no damage.
And then they just get cleaned?
Correct.
Sure. I would just like to speak to the calling of the snow days. I realize that, you know, in the superintendency, it's definitely the worst job to have is to call or not to call the emergency closing, the delayed opening, the early dismissal. I do try my very best to call things early. So if I know, like last night, I knew this morning would be MS, called it early, especially when I'm talking to my South Burton jointer group and all of the districts seem to be kind of going in the same direction. Now, not every community is the same. We flood. Let's say maybe the next town over doesn't flood like we flood here, right? So when we had the flood that we were expecting, we had an OEM call, and the information at that time was it's going to rain, there's going to be water, but the worst flooding may come between 12 and 3. Even though high tide is 8 o'clock or 8:02, the worst flooding may come between 12 and 3. So you may not want to call a delayed opening too quickly because you may actually need an early dismissal. You may have, and Stephanie's part of that call, and Brian's part of that call, you may be in a situation where you really just need to get everybody home, not necessarily have the flooding issue in the morning. And if all that's flooding is the field, I don't need to delay school for that. So the call was made late at night, maybe 11 o'clock, when, or quarter to 11, when we received notification that the greatest amount of flooding would no longer be in the afternoon, and I could make that call. So I realized that that may leave people in a position where they're saying, "Okay, at 11 o'clock at night, I have to make arrangements for delayed opening tomorrow." However, I could easily and reasonably call a snow day at 6:00 AM, which is very often when some districts do call snow days. So I just want people to understand that because everybody else around us had already called a delayed opening, but I was waiting for the water to rise at another time, and I didn't... Look, we only... We have, we've used one day already because of power. We only have two left. So I don't want to give away the full day too soon. We're not, we're only January 17th. We have a lot of winter to get through. It's supposed to be Dad. So I'm just saying that because I don't want you to think that I'm like sitting around twiddling my thumbs if I'm not calling the day and other communities have. It could be because we have unique circumstances here. I'm not trying to, you know, be difficult or give parents, you know, a heart attack about trying to find something to do with their kids in the morning. So call as soon as I can, when I know that I can. I promise, and I'm sorry if calling things late, you know, causes a difficulty for parents, but I just want you to know that there's a reason why.
I forgot something. Who can report?
Our student board representative was here. And it's icy, and she's a new driver, and so we told her to go home. But she did send me her report. I'm going to save...
Oh, can you read it?
In the report.
No, you have to say, "I hope you're having a great January so far."
Hello, everyone. I can't do it justice. Like, I'll just read the important piece of it because... But she did, she wants to say, "I hope everyone had a happy holiday and a happy new year." And then I'll leave the rest, but she... The senior class is doing a drive for new or gently-used formalware, and they will be taking collections to give those items for those in need of prom. Collections can be brought into the school, and there is a bin by the front entrance. Yeah, so I just thought that that was important to get out early, and then the rest of her report she will give in addition to her February report. Because I just can't to Mackenzie justice.
Exactly. You gotta do it.
I wish I could, but the Board just loves hearing from her.
And Mackenzie is rehearsing for Beauty and the Beast. I believe she is going to assume the role of Cogsworth, and you should all come out to see it. Okay, any Liaison Board Committee reports? No? Okay, any correspondence?
Yes.
I would like to accept the correspondence from Bridget Medina on 12/29/23. And then I did share with the Board correspondence regarding the planning board for the master plan. And I was a little bit confused, Mr. Lombardi, because are you on the zoning board and are you a part of it, or are you interested in doing it?
Sorry. So, yeah, I'm on the zoning board. I have it for a long time. I'm interested in doing it, and some towns have combined planning and zoning boards, but I just didn't know if it was a conflict because the zoning board is really an appeal board. So I didn't know if it was a conflict for me to be a representative of the district at the planning board. Maybe Mr. DeCosta can answer that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't believe it.
As long as it's not a conflict.
Yeah, I don't believe it would be a conflict. I mean, it's very, very early stage, right? Like, master planning is a long-term thing, you know, ten-year look ahead. I do think Ms. Lombardi should definitely come to the Tuesday meeting once we approve that position for that committee. They could be really important. I invite anybody to come, especially with...
Mike, you talk about?
Yeah, yeah. Well, next Tuesday is the re-master plan work session, public work session. That letter was sent, I sent that letter for anybody who's interested in attending public work as part of a committee or another board in town. It's open to everyone.
Yes, the mayor could say that anybody who lives in the community who wants to go to the flood committee meetings was welcome to come, but he was just hoping that we could have a representative from the Board mission.
Yeah, and the flooding piece is a portion of the overall master plan discussion, but a very important one, obviously.
Is that everything?
That's it.
Okay. Open to the public for items on the agenda, as outlined in New Milford Board of Education Bill 0167. Each statement made by a person shall be limited to three minutes. Seek a motion, Paige, seconded by John DeCosta. All in favor? Opposed? Any questions from the public on the agenda? Okay, I seek a motion to close to the public. Paige Ryan, seconded by Toni Albro. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, Board, action. I seek a motion for BA 23-24.39, .53, .54, .55, .56, .57, .59, and .60. Need a second? John DeCosta, all in favor? Opposed? Educational Programs and Curriculum Committee, it's Stephanie.
I make motion to seek approval for C-23-24.24, .25, and .26. I need a second?
Angela Lombardi, all in favor? Opposed? Personnel recommendation, having recommendation of the superintendent. I seek a motion for P-22-23.162, P-23-24.23, .43, .44, .45, .54, .60, .70, .71, .74, .75, .76, .77, .78, .79, .80, .81, .82, .83, .84, .85, .86, .87, .88, .89...
point eighty-two, point eighty-three, point eighty-four, point eighty-five, point eighty-six, and point eighty-seven. Need a second? Joe Luna, roll call. Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Ms. Delro?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Ms. Quelkinder?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Dunn?
Yes.
President Gomis?
Yes.
Yes, I, I apologize that I neglected to mention Diane Fortante, who is also one of our administrative assistants this year. She's at Berkeley Street School, and she has been with us, I think, twenty-four years. I think that's what she said. So, yeah, a long time. She's worked in a lot of buildings and done a lot of different things for us, and she said she is leaving with a smile on her face, because she's very happy at Berkeley Street School, and we will miss her. And? Yes. You do a little further up? I do? Fifty-four. Oh, Betty Agresta, we actually did accept her retirement before, for Betty. I was thinking she was retiring in December and had to revise her retirement date.
So Finance and Facilities Committee, Cheryl?
I seek a motion for F twenty-three dash twenty-four point one thirty-five, point one thirty-six, point one thirty-seven, point one thirty-eight, point one thirty-nine, point one four-zero, point one forty-one, point one forty-two, point one forty-three, point one forty-four, point one forty-five, point one forty-six, point one forty-seven, point one forty-eight, point one forty-nine, point one fifty, point one fifty-one, and point one fifty-two.
Need a second?
Oh, you just thanked the.
Second.
Oh, second, and then thanks.
So, okay, Nicole Dunn?
I just wanted to thank the New Milford Education Foundation for their donation.
Yes.
And someone else. Don't need to, photograph.
Oh, thank you for all the donations. And Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Athletics Co-Curriculum Committee, Nicole Dunn?
I seek a motion for AC twenty-three dash twenty-four point twelve, point thirteen, point fourteen. And I also want to thank the three gentlemen for their volunteers for volunteering for the baseball positions.
New Milford alumnae.
Always. It's always great to see that. I need a second. Joe Luna, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any old business? So I just, regarding old business, I know there's been some discussion about some of the committees. I know there was a request maybe to stop one of the committees, and one of them being ad hoc for new board member orientation. I do think that board, that committee should meet first and actually do something, and then we can dissolve it, only because that was a request a few years ago by new board members, and there's really been nothing done. And it will help future board members when they're new ones, so that would be something we could work on. Any other, anything else? No? Okay. Any new business? Open to the public, as outlined in New Milford Board of Education Bylaw zero-one-six-seven, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. I seek a motion. John DeCosta? Seconded by Nicole Dunn? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. I seek a motion to close, Paige, seconded by, I just, I don't know why Tony, Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, any board member requests for additional information? Okay, we are, closed session. Is hereby moved the Board of Education adjourned into executive session in accordance with the provisions of section eight of the Open Public Means Act, Chapter two thirty-one PL, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject personnel. The minutes of the executive session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I seek a motion to close, Paige, seconded by John DeCosta, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
So we typically say whether or not we may or may not take action. Is this something that?
Will we come back, right?
Right.
I don't think we're going to be taking action after we come back, correct?
Go on.